I'm on here right now, so.
Well, I think coming up for saying.
Something. We're gonna review three group number seven then.
And I would like.
Do you think you'll be ready next year?
Well, I hope, well, the thing about it is, right, Becky and I are gonna be here next week.
That's all we have to say.
There's just.
Well, I'm gonna be here.
Yeah, so we'll probably have to be.
Right around. Okay, well, I'll let you tell me whatever.
It's nine o'clock. Please join me in a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, again, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Mike. Hope you all stayed cool today. All right. First thing we have to do is approve the agenda and on the agenda, item number seven has been deleted. That was not been completed yet. So we will take that off the agenda. Any additions or questions to the agenda?
What's that change? I'll make the recommendation if we approve the agenda.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Next we have is approval of the minutes of last week. I thought they read well. I will make a motion to have approved the minutes as presented.
I'll second that one.
Then moved in second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. First thing we have on the agenda this morning is the Maple River Township trustee appointment. This is a replacement for Richard Baumhumber.
Richard Baumhumber. And Randy Dries has put his name in for approval to be the Maple River Township trustee. And with that, I'll make a motion to to appoint Randy Dries as township trustee for Maple River Township. That would complete before then.
And how long is that quite a bit? Is this a filling one or when it's left, you know, I'll come here?
It'll be good until the next term of election. So if the seat's not going to be on the ballot already, it'll be on the ballot as a vacancy. And then it'll run until it's held up for maybe two years or whatever. I'm not sure what Richard's term is. I have to.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to appoint Randy Dries as the new Maple River Township trustee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Along with that, I publicly want to thank Richard Baumhumber for his years as Maple River Township trustee.
And I also want to thank Randy for stepping up. He volunteered. Volunteered hard to come back.
Oh, he's stepping into his landlords. I thought that, I kind of pressed him a little bit.
Okay, next we have is the homestead and military applications. We do it every year. There is, do we want to do each of this separately or?
I would approve the homestead and military applications as a motion and then just like they are on the agenda. We'll do the disapproval, but the homestead and military, you can see on the spreadsheets, there are the new ones, so there are the allowances and the disallowances, the ones and the ones that have been removed as well. Lists are maintained by the county assessor who takes in those applications. And we do, like Keith said, we do this every year.
We have to do also the old homesteads disallowances.
I would make a motion to approve the homestead and military applications. That's gonna cover the new ones and new ones.
Okay. First of all, is there any questions on these lists? I went through, I didn't see anything there. It was surprising to me.
Now, my only question is, and I don't know that either, I should have asked Cindy. Would you qualify for military? I mean, if you're the spouse and you pass away.
It continues on.
It continues on. They just want to make sure that that's, you know, it does not stop with that military.
Yeah, I think there's one in Greedo whose husband's has been dead for geez, that'd been sixty years.
I think the truth is known, you have a child that's ex-military and so disabled, whatever, it's most of all. But there's income. Okay. So is there any other discussion? If not, looking for a motion to approve the homestead and military applications.
I'll some of.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve the homestead and military applications. Next we have, oh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is disabled veterans' homestead and tax credit applications. Hearing no. I will let you ask.
Well, I have a question about that. So what's the difference between a disabled veteran exemption and a military exemption?
There's two different ones.
Well, I understand that, but could you apply for one? I mean, could these people apply for the?
Military.
Military or is there something different about that?
I think they apply for military and also it's a disabled, there's also additional credit.
Oh, so there's two different credits.
So they can get a larger credit than that, right? All right.
So unless they have a military or disabled, they would not be eligible for.
Great, gotcha.
If you're curious, I would just talk with the assessor because we try to understand and the disabled veterans' credit is significant. Okay, so if you want to know more on that, I would just check with Cindy.
Okay, hearing no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the disabled veterans' homestead tax credit applications.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the disabled veterans' homestead tax credit application. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is a plat. And this is for Ben Helber. And this is in section nineteen of Pleasantville.
Plat not an acreage, where it looks.
Yeah.
Five acres. That's pretty straightforward, I would say, and so I'll make a motion to approve the Helber plat.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is the audit letter. Let's go down to number six. Kind of run ahead here.
Yeah, I have no idea how long this stuff would stand.
Yeah.
So we have this is approval of the letter for Romwell Bell and Time and Company for to do the fiscal year twenty-one audit, which is I guess just completed for the fiscal year. So this is basically at the same price as last year.
How do you find him to work with, Courtney?
Really easy to work with.
She got an A+ which she likes?
No, I just, they were very nice to work with. They did a lot of stuff remotely, which saves us money. I've never come up here. I didn't hear any complaints from any of the departments. Like, we have had some complaints in the past, I haven't heard any, other than it was, you know, obviously we haven't got the final audit yet, but it's my understanding that it's basically done, so.
I assume the COVID restrictions changing, we may see them a little bit.
You know, and it wasn't, you know, I give them credit, it was the first year they did an audit for us, so I should have, it probably took longer than it will in years to come. Just because we were in the, I really liked working with them.
Did they indicate when we're gonna give the audit from last year?
I got the draft, I believe, last week. Reviewed the draft, the draft will be fine. So I let them know that, we can go soon. I think the deadline was the thirtieth, so.
So you do have the completed audit?
Well, I got a draft.
So, you know, I'm a little bit confused. Services we are are to provide for the year, for the year ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, they're basically asking us to permit to them doing our audit for twenty-one. They just completed the audit for twenty.
Okay.
We want to do our audit for twenty-one.
And generally, wouldn't this be done sooner than this?
The letter's dated June fourteenth, so, I mean, I got it a few weeks ago.
Well, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
We don't have, we do a three-year contract.
And maybe they'd be willing to do that. I don't, I don't know.
And I think when we went into this, we kind of thought about it year by year for, until we see how it worked out for us. And I think we wanted to make a huge commitment.
Probably what I used to do.
You know, the state used to do it.
And we're probably a little less here than we were with the state.
Money-wise?
Yes.
Yeah, about half.
About half.
And a lot of that, I mean, the travel is a lot of the expense, not personally mixed it up. You know, they'd stay here, they'd stay a couple of weeks at hotel.
But with COVID last year, I guess we really can't use this, we can say it's half, but what'll be half an extra if they have more travel?
My guess would be, you know, since doing it remote this year, they work pretty well. They would probably prefer to stay home and, you know, just like stay home, but stay in their hometown.
I would assume so.
And now that we kind of know what they're looking for and they know what to ask for, I would assume that it's the same. You know, I don't think it should take longer, unless we have some special circumstances or something that require additional work.
Scott, just to bring you up to speed a little bit, a lot of companies, you mentioned companies named. Those companies will not do like us anymore. Because there's special standard audits for government agencies.
I remember we used it for something and they pulled out, I'm going back a couple of years.
Yeah, particularly to, and when you get over so many dollars of federal money. Because then you have to do special audits, what they call special audits. They take that fund and then they really dig through it.
I guess my only question was, does that have to be a competitive bid like most things? Where you pick a load of money back?
We did do that, yeah.
There we did.
We had two firms apply and only one firm stuck with that because I think the other firm had a relative that worked here, so.
Conflict.
Conflict of interest. Probably not a huge conflict, but in their eyes, they did not want to risk it being a perceived conflict, so these were kind of the people that
See, where it's stated, if the state, if there is a conflict, that person is not getting involved.
And they had a lot more staff to work for.
Because I've gotten alters of work from states.
You're based on a plan.
Correct. And they, I believe this firm is the one that does Crawford County, if I'm not mistaken.
Crawford County, I know they've, like I said, they've done new opportunities for several years. They're one of the few companies out there that will do this government program type thing. Not that I'm pushing for one way or another.
Well, my only point would be if we don't go with these guys, we should have gotten somebody to take care of it six months ago, not now. But I'm not saying that we have to, I'm just saying that we wanted to consider switching, that we probably should have done that. It's not too late.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess I'm always a particular for accountability and I don't think, and I don't know if you can agree to this, Courtney or not, but I don't think we are as accountable with this accounting firm as we would be with the state. There hasn't been any asks about that, has there?
No, and after I, when I reviewed their draft, their audit looks almost dynamical to the state's audit.
The actual audit.
Yeah, I mean, you look through and they're looking at everything the state looked at.
I guess in reading the letter and the audit procedures under compliance, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether financial statements are free of material misstatement, we will perform tests of Carroll County Iowa's compliance provisions of applicable laws, regulations, contracts, agreements, including grant agreements. However, the objective of those procedures will not be to provide an opinion on overall compliance. We will not express such an opinion in our reports compliant, report on compliance issued pursuant to government audit standards. So I, I mean, you know, they're not going to either. They're, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna do the audit, they're not gonna do any any oversight at all and.
I believe the oversight comes from the board supervisors. I mean, ultimately, you guys are the ones in charge of making sure people are
Well.
doing what they should be doing, and you can use the audit as a tool to see that. They did have some recommendations, very similar to the state audit of, you know, splitting duties, you know, where we have very small offices and there's one person, and they like, more people to do it. They had those similar recommendations, so, I mean, they did look at that. Similar recommendations, as they have been very, very many years, they look awfully familiar when they return out.
And I think the other thing is, she's right, it's probably up to supervisors and also the county attorney. There's legal action, the county attorney is the one that will prosecute. So what they'll do is they'll provide a conflict with the county attorney and it goes from there.
So the board of health can have food again. Unless I say no, being the supervisor.
State auditor's recommendation on the food was, is that a public meeting? Are you feeding the public when they come to that meeting and what benefit is to the public? My concern was, we weren't feeding the public. You were feeding the people showing up at the board, and that'd be no different than us using tax dollars to give you guys breakfast every Monday morning. Are we gonna feed anybody that shows up? You know, I mean.
Well, you know, and I'm just saying, so, I mean, it falls on us now.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, and I try, I don't see every claim that comes through, but I do try, and if there's something that I think is
Questionable.
questionable, it's gonna come over you guys.
And you do that, I would say.
And you guys do the same thing, you know, when you look at that report, so.
There is, you know, I mean, the only thing is, is do they do they do a good job in as far as and we don't have a lot, but I just went to a a breakout session once, one time with ISAC and Mary Moselman was the was the presenter from the state auditor's office. And she gave all kinds of things that, you know, that the state looks for in their audits. And, you know, I'm just, I think we just have to be aware of oversight, and a lot of it had to do with credit cards. You know, people using credit cards and.
In credit card programs. They roll along with those.
Yeah, and so, so, you know, that would be a concern of mine if they're not gonna do that, this firm's not gonna do that, so it leaves it on somebody else to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Now, they didn't pull every credit card claim that the county paid for the year. However, they pull random ones, and that's exactly what the state did. They didn't pull every single one, they just, they get a list of all the ones that were paid out and they pick several of them, and maybe random, maybe different departments, and they would admit it was. If there wasn't a receipt with that, then there was, then there was question for their end. This firm did that as well, we pulled multiple claims for them, so I can't compare the two, but I do know that they did do that, maybe not as many, I don't know, I have no record how many the state did, but they are pulling some also.
I don't know why there's that much difference in the this state versus private company.
Well, and I'm sure if they're not, if they're not doing something that you would like to see, I think it'd be very simple to contact them and say, hey, we would like you to this or we want this more in depth or something, I mean, we should maybe do that. It doesn't matter.
Because I think they, they will send out a letter if there's someone that there's, or you have any one of the questions they'll ask, and I know I get this from new opportunities. Is there anything that you see as an issue or that you got a question? So, yeah, I have no way to do that. And that's, that's a good way to start.
So this is just for one year then?
It's for one year, okay.
Any other discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve Romwell Bell Ken?
Time.
Time and Company for the fiscal year twenty-one audit.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second to approve Romwell Bell and Time and Company for the twenty-one audit. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
Yes, it's down, it's up next for the chairman.
All right, let's go to review the M's director.
So Scott and I met with the AMV board and obviously expertise on the medical side was left into a few people on that board. Scott and I are not medical doctors or maybe we're nurses. And a lot of it, we pulled the one that was used in two thousand and seven for originally when Darrell was hired.
Seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, and we went through that and kind of marked that, and we actually ended up scratching it because we just went from blank, and I did send this up to you guys, there was a couple grammar things I'm going to change, but with your guys' approval, I just kind of wanted the board to see it before Scott and I sent it on to the newspapers. I did ask Courtney, once we get this approved, she'll send it to the newspapers, so that includes Carol, me and Coon. We will put it up on a website that this department all belongs to, and then also have probably for the next few weeks or two, have whoever's doing the radio newspaper to mention that. So we have some radio time too. Do you guys have any questions beyond that?
Didn't you say there was last time you also put it in?
A magazine that EMTs and.
Cause I, I don't know, what is it, IEMS?
I thought that gave us a little bit more outside of accounting exposure. If there's a paramedic doctor that has an interest in becoming, moving into management side, again, self to bring for them to apply, at least be notified of it. Because there are some parameters, we have to be a paramedic first of all, I mean, there's some minimal things that have to be met, so that's why I wanted to go right straight to those people when we did that. And it turned out that we had a few applicants that he. When he mentioned the name, it was almost like ISAC for
Yeah.
medics, but I don't.
I think you're right, it's I am something.
We're looking to move on this a little quickly, because there is some training in August for that certain position, so if we were to be able to hire, it would be nice to send them straight into training if they don't have some of that, so.
Yeah, my only thing was on the managerial experience, preferred but not required. We're down in the job description, you say demonstrate strong skills in management. So, you know, I there's, those two are conflicting statements, and I would almost say managerial experience.
Preferred.
I don't know if it's preferred or not required. You choose the word you want, but.
And as far as the medical part of it, I'm glad you went paramedic, because otherwise you would have a career. I think at least you need to be paramedic, exactly.
Yeah, that was a big concern for, for us, that we were paramedic.
Critical care is a whole different step.
And I do want to clarify so that the ad itself that I sent to you guys, it's a good ad, it's probably a little too big because it would be expensive to put that large of an ad in the newspaper, so.
You mean this one?
Yeah, definitely that one. Skim it down and then have them direct it to the county website and have Dawn put it on.
And then he can have the full, exactly.
So is this the one, this the one you think you're gonna put in paper?
I think I'm gonna skim it, I think we should skim it down even further than that.
Okay, so the only thing I would recommend, or I'm not recommending, I'm telling you we have to have it on there, but it says Carroll County is an equal opportunity employer. That's a statement that all our ads have to have, but other than that, I think it looks okay.
As you said, I was.
Yeah, I remember somebody got, had to rerun their ad because they had forgotten that statement.
So what I'll do then is I'll, when I get done here, I'll do those changes that we had discussed, and then I'll put that on there, and then I'll run it to you. And then, do you want to send it on to the newspapers?
Yeah, I would need that pretty quick to go to the indication sheet. Because Coon and Manning published their study.
It's too scary to use it.
I don't use it.
I don't know, you can take their.
I can, worst case scenario, I would have found anything shows up in the paper.
So what are you looking at, closing date? September and closing date and then hiring date, because they're two different dates.
There's training in August?
You don't live in August.
Tammy had mentioned that.
She, Taya, yeah.
Or Taya.
Do you remember her date? She didn't say, I don't think, no, she said early.
I want to say it was August.
She said early August.
I want to say she said like the twelfth or the thirteenth, and we might be pushing it, and you know what, if you can't make it to the training, you can't.
Or they might already have it.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes they'll have that video, but you can take it later on too.
So we want to run it for two weeks, is that standard?
Well, it's.
I mean, we can pick the time. Yeah, I would think, Scott, you're right, I think two weeks would be the minimum if you were running. It's like to you guys to see if you want to run it a little paper than that. If we don't make one of the local papers here, we should look at maybe doing the twenty-ninth, the thirtieth, if it makes the paper, I would be okay with the twenty-third as a Friday. That's a week earlier.
Good things are better when you did that base.
I think that's an online thing that.
I don't know if that's.
The one they were talking about, they mentioned was online.
The one they were talking about, they mentioned was online.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, you could shoot and get it published at least the sixteenth and twenty-third, but you're closing it because the thirty, because. The twenty-third, there's still a week for people to apply.
Right.
My caution, don't cut it too short, because you'll lose some good candidates.
I'd be more comfortable going at least to the thirtieth.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so too.
So shoot for publishing the sixteenth. The twenty-third, um, if you can get it in the night, that's just a bonus. My, my opinion, and then have the closing date.
So at best, you'll, you'll review the meet uh August first through seven, at best. And you, at best, you'll bring your recommendation to the ninth meeting for the board.
Well, you're, you're being aggressive there.
I know, that, that's at best.
I would say the sixteenth would be more realistic, but yeah.
I think you're right.
Well, then if you got two candidates, are you gonna have them come in and meet with the board?
Because that's the plan, two or three, depends on how, I mean, if some under title be up to the ambulance board. And Stephanie and I have my own narrow down to, but at least two.
And is that what she has already planned, bringing those two in?
Two or three.
I mean, if you can, you still have to get a few.
Three.
All at the same.
Couple.
Yeah, we had a couple.
Yeah.
And that was.
Yeah, maybe that's wishful thinking for three, but.
But things are different.
You're gonna. Wendy did agree, if she were to apply, she would, um, obviously.
Obstand.
Obstand and not part of the, we have a process.
They're gonna be sent up here by the ordinance office and.
And we'll review with the board, the ambulance board. And then decide out of, if there's fifteen people, pick five to interview or.
Down a little bit down a little, how it rebase.
Well, I'm sure some of them are gonna have questions, because we don't have a salary posted, and there's a lot of things that people are gonna be asking.
Right.
Just off the record, how many, how many ambulance services are county and state, and how many of those counties are union? I know not all of them are county.
Well, I can tell you Dallas County is, um, Calhoun.
Like Polk isn't a county?
No, uh.
Those are all city, but are those union, are Dallas and Calhoun union?
That, that, that's a question I can't answer.
That could be pretty hard to tell.
I don't know, I gotta remember that.
I thought there were five counties that, that was Washington, I think, one that was, I can't remember. But I think there was like five, but there's been a law since then.
There may have been more jump into that, right?
I think you're gonna have, there's more, we're doing it now, because there was places like up Long, um, thirty-five to the north. Like Amathon and, and some of them, thirty-one north of that, where it can't either.
Right.
Right, right. Those people were having a hard time getting ambulance doctor, so they were, this new law gives them the bill to attach for. They will, and call essential services. I think you're gonna see a lot more counties de-count, or ambulance is operated by the county. Because a lot of these hospitals and stuff don't want. And if you, if you refer like the air flights, that's changed the cost.
Right.
Unity, we don't, yep.
Now, did that law change you twenty?
No, that just changed your living.
Yeah, that just changed us last year. Yeah.
I think it probably, I think.
I think it was in the last, last month or so.
I think Daryl had said he had gotten lots of calls about it, but nobody, he said no one confirmed that they were gonna do it. They just wanted to look at the str- auto structure.
Well, actually, I had a call, uh. Guys on the legislative committee with you, you know the guy, he's the best one. I'm trying to think where he's from, uh, it's down Southeast Island, he just called me, maybe a month or two ago. How we do it here in Little Cross, but, you know, I get off top, it'll be number right there, I remember him, but. He has some very good questions, and they're not gonna answer them, right? Because again.
It's a good formula.
They don't have any, any service. So, um, yeah, we're, we're probably one of the few right now, but I think there's gonna be more.
Yeah, you know, and um, Calhoun County's got that ad in the paper about they can't get any EMTs and. You know, so I mean, where, where they're, where they are sufficient in some areas, they're not in all areas and.
Things are changing. For all.
Yeah, I hope that.
Okay, so you guys got direction there?
Yep.
I think thank you, you did a good job then. All right, and we'll look for you to do that, and if you're looking at closing on July thirtieth, don't matter.
Maybe by the sixteenth, we will have it narrowed down. Hopefully by the sixteenth.
Yeah, if I put it in three hundred thirty, I might close it.
Yeah, that's nothing.
Okay. You don't want to shoot that back again?
I mean, applications are gonna be due to Courtney by July thirtieth.
Yeah, three times four o'clock.
Four thirty, four forty.
Yeah, she'll do either right.
I'm just trying to be willing to be the first.
Yeah, exactly.
At four thirty.
Okay, thank you.
It's nine thirty.
Yep, nine thirty, publish, huh?
Sorry, nine thirty-five.
Nine thirty-five. Sorry about that.
Carly, you can join up here if you like, or you can sit right there.
Okay, nine thirty-five, I'm gonna open the public hearing for the status of funded activities for CDBG down payment assistance program. Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, I asked Courtney, has there been any written or?
I have received. I didn't either. So a quick recap of your program is um, the Carroll County received two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars in CDBG funds to provide down payment assistance and lead hazard reduction to five homeowners at or below eighty percent of the county AMI. The assistance is in the form of a five-year forgivable loan and can provide up to fifty percent of the bank's required down payment assistance, up to thirty-five percent in closing, thirty-five hundred in closing costs, up to three hundred in inspection fees, and up to seven thousand and one in lead hazard reduction. Qualified applicants purchasing a home within Carroll County are eligible for consideration. Due to the overwhelming response to the program, two amendments were submitted to IEDA and, and approved, which increased the number of participants to ten from your original five. Nine of these applicants have closed on their home, and five of them are waiting to get their lead hazard reduction work completed, which is scheduled for July and just slightly into the first week of August. The final applicant is expected to close August sixth with lead hazard work to follow. All projects will be complete well ahead of the program completion date of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. We're hoping we'll see this program ending late August, September, depending on that last houses. Um, because as you know, you generously decided to apply again in two thousand and twenty-one, so. Where Courtney's being bombarded from both sides, right?
So we went from originally from five to ten.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, in six months to.
How's the lead abatement going, is it slow, the contractors kind of slow in getting there or?
There are so few certified lead abatement, well, it's not abatement, it would be lead hazard reduction, that, that is kind of been difficult. There's just not very many of them, so we've done some additional testing at three homes to prove that the paint that was peeling was not lead hazard. So they were able to get their down payment assistance, they were able to close, and they were just able to move on. So that has been kind of a nice forum.
So this provides down payment plus lead mitigation.
If there was a hazard, so there were a few basements that had the peeling paint on the walls, which is a lead hazard if they were before nineteen seventy-eight. So we just started taking tests, sent them in, and let them go more test of positives, so we were able to keep passing go and keep helping more people too, because we didn't have to spend additional funds. So to date, we have spent a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents in down payment assistance, closing costs, inspection fees, lead hazard reduction and technical services, and five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents in administrative fees equalling eighty-seven point four percent of your total funds. Again, we want to thank the supervisors for participating. I think it did some good. I did do a little research, we had nine first-time home buyers. One was a second-time home buyer moving from one house to another. Two came to the area, I think you asked me that last time, and I wasn't sure. Two came to the area, the other were either first-time home buyers or renters who are now in home. And we had one Manning, one Rita, one Mount Carmel, and the rest were in Carroll. I really foresee the next round getting spread out, because it was just getting into the Manning, Manila, and Glidden when it went so fast, the funds didn't, that they just weren't there. So all of those bankers have been added to our email list and will be made aware when the second round is awarded.
Noah wouldn't vote for that new program.
No, but he had someone purchasing in Carroll County, paying from the number he was. And so he asked to make, yes, yes, they're over in Crawford County, and I spoke to their supervisors. How great Carroll County was.
And this is one reason why that we are, you, we were asked to participate in this is, is, am I not correct? They used to have to have five in their community in order to get spring boarded, to get started. And some of the communities we won is about all they can generate, most of those people were always out.
Right.
So this would give us the opportunity to use the whole county as fighting the five.
Correct, correct. So that, that was just one step in the right direction, and we already had a good baseline of banks that are fairly local. So we knew that we could market it well, and as I said, it's the first year for the program from the state, so we kind of wanted to keep close to home until we saw how it really worked through when we got the keys looked out.
Do you see this as reading twelve? Do you see this as helping the financial institutions make those loans? Or are we kind of stepping under toes a little bit?
Each one of these clients would be paying PMI insurance without it.
Okay.
Each one of them.
Which is going to raise their, um, well, that monthly payment.
Which makes their monthly payments, it's a slightly bigger risk for the bank. And it just snowballs on down.
It takes some of the risks that makes them feel a little more comfortable.
Correct.
Being in a position there.
Yes, and therefore it's lowering that monthly mortgage by not having that PMI insurance. So the banks are sitting in a better position, maybe some of them wouldn't have been funded without that down payment. And if they would have, they definitely would have been paying PMI insurance. Any other questions?
Okay, so the, um, the down payments vary, is there any? Um, top side to the value of the house as far as when you can, I mean. I, I, I know one of these particular, you know, I'm just questioning that just a little bit.
Top side of the house is about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. It's slightly different for IEDA and home, but it's, it's up anyway.
Good.
Yes, and value of the home dictated amount of down payment assistance that they were purchasing, because we were, our goal was to meet to that twenty percent. IEDA hadn't really determined what a bank's required down payment was. And so through working with us, they kind of had made the rule that to eliminate the PMI insurance with the twenty percent down, so they were willing to cover ten percent of it, and then the homeowner had to come up with the upper ten through whatever means they were able to.
Got you.
Any other questions? Save that up close and public hearing at. At nine forty-three. Do we, we do that, we, we need a motion to approve?
No idea.
Actually, I will send you some minutes, and I'll write the times in, and I'll probably highlight it to make sure I did it right. For you to look at, and if you can just include those in your board minutes and email me a copy, that's all I need for the.
Just your consent for motion.
No, just a couple of comments.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hope the next one is just.
Let's hope so. There's quite a ways down that path, so I think I see you next Monday about that, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh. Manure management plan, uh, we have Jason and Nathan Needle in section thirty-two of Meese Township, no changes. Yen and Nam Farms, two, section twenty-eight of Arcadia Township, a four-year plan. Schumacher and Son Incorporated, number one, section sixteen of Pleasant Valley Township, and also Schumacher and Son Incorporated, number two, section sixteen, Pleasant Valley Township. Both of these are annual, report change crop location or for up to meals, and use manure analysis. We will next do committee reports. Um, and I can start, um. We had, we're supposed to have. Um. We were supposed to have a communication meeting last Monday, that got canceled and moved to a conflict, and had it rescheduled for August ninth. And otherwise, the rest of the week, um, there was, uh, there was supposed to be a CADC board meeting, no, there was not. Uh, but, um, one thing I did have, I had several phone calls this last week, one was from Ed Smith, the director of our review. And also I had had some conversations with Jim Allen at CADC, and then also I included Rich in that. Uh, originally, they came out with a crew or a committee to go through the hiring process for a new director. And it passed, and someone from the city and someone from the county, due to our contribution. And that was not done, he kind of forgot about that. And I was asked to be on that committee, and I told Jim that I would just sue not, because I want to avoid any conflict in case someone else applied on that. So I had, as Rich just said on that field call, and he has agreed to do that. So that's one, and then I also had a conversation with Carol Bell regarding to you guys as a committee. And then, um, Tom Porter from Blue Stone Engineering, was, he's a part of the S and B H group. Uh, he's basically involved with HABC, wanted to come out and do a, uh, look through the facility. And I had, I set that up with, uh, means I was calling, I set that up, uh, Zach. Took care of that analysis, contacted these two about it. So that was my week last week. This week, I have the, um, radio and newspaper, and, uh, wrong store. And that is it, lots of stuff, so. Always looks like a CADC meeting today too, but I gotta do that. So that's my week.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next, uh, on the twenty-ninth, we had a, uh, WIWD, Western Iowa Workforce Development. That was kind of a, a quickly pulled together as quickly as we could do it and get it advertised. Uh, the issue at hand was the Western Iowa Workforce Development Board is not covered under Arizona National Insurance. It originally was thought being the supervisors from all these counties were the headboard, that their umbrellas would cover that. Uh, we were advised by two different county attorneys that was incorrect. So the, my position on that board is covered by the Arizona National, but it stops there. That next board that we appointed down below us is on their own. So that was what this meeting was for, is we were getting RFPs out for insurance for that board. Without it would be covered, and their fund is nothing for us. I guess I kind of thought they were covered all over, but, um, no, it really give that second layer much of a thought, to tell you the truth. So that's what that meeting was hastily put together for, so we could get that ball rolling, and nothing has been decided. Um, this week, uh, the eighth, uh, Stefan and I have a new opportunities, uh, meeting. We're gonna do an audit on the eighth, that shouldn't take real long. And then also on the eighth, we have Region Twelve, the board and Scott and Steph. And then also on the 8th, Region 12, the board and Scott and Steph will also be there as the, at that meeting also. Then on the 9th, I will have a West, Western Iowa Local Workforce Development Board. Those, there is one scheduled. It's a leadership thing. All I really do is I don't vote. I sit and listen and make sure that they're being trained as hard as can. We've got three supervisors that have been really doing our diligence about setting in. He's making sure that these meetings are being run correctly, publicing what's being put into them. So, and I've been one of those. And I think I've missed one of these. Most of them are all done by December, so they're pretty easily done. And they usually last 25 to 30 minutes. So they usually pick a sub and you can make it a little longer. So other than that, that is all I have for this week.
I go next. Last week, um, went to Sharpies Plaza, Rita, and got to hear Mr. Gass's speak, which was great. And I think everybody, most of us were all there. And then we had an ambulance board meeting. And obviously they had all that moving forward, the applications and how to go forward with adding for the advertisement. This upcoming week, um, new opportunities on Thursday and then Region 12 Policy Council on Thursday. And then I also will work on the ambulance ad. I'll try and do that right after the meeting. So we'll do that first, then. That's it.
You go next. Rich covered so Stephanie. Thursday night, this week will be policy council. Last week was ambulance meeting. Stephanie covered that. That's all I have.
Uh, I didn't have anything, um, scheduled for last week. Did get a couple of calls. One of them was on Maple River situation by another constituent, the Riley situation there. And a letter has been delivered to that individual. Body's encroachment, I don't know, right away. So this individual is glad to hear that we're actually moving on that. And worked on the RFP. Somewhat, I guess, a little bit hamstrung right now with that. But I have nothing for next, this, this coming week, rest of the week. I'm sure something will pop up. Always does.
Uh, one thing I might also add, I did get an email, I forgot to say. We got an email from Kevin Skinner. And I had talked before, they were putting this on the agenda for next week. Western Iowa Network is a climate amendment that they're funding for round six of the World ILL log ban grant program. And they would like to have our letter of recommendation for support on that. So we will put that on the agenda for next week.
For a year old.
Right. He, he said they don't know for sure yet. I think they're just, it's came out and they're just. And I think that's due, I think it's in July, I can't remember.
Yeah.
7/28. Okay, pardon me, what did you get?
We're gonna do number 11?
Yeah, she's coming.
Oh, okay.
That's the request. She's coming.
So next week, it looks like at 9:30, we'll see Carla again, purple and carrying on. Down payment assistance. Talk about the medical examiner's compensation. It's a bill day. We have the letters for win. Right now, that's what I have.
Did spend some time with Zach last week. After the meeting here, we did a walkabout in the driveway. Talking about several different things. He's gonna do some research about finding someone to come deal with some type of estimates. There, there's a lot more issues out there. If you try one project, they're gonna run into another snag. And if you go this way, it could be better. So he's gonna give us some his thoughts on options. And, and I'm, I'm gonna have to use, I mean, what I did. And I can be a part of it. I thought maybe it would be as good, I was in time, means we had a construction going on. Going on, yeah, was in Olympic Avenue. But maybe it's a good time to have an asphalt. I look at that. But then there's other issues with that. So, um, beans, the, the, just the swoop around for the handicap parking spots, those are issues. Because we would have to remove all that concrete in order to get depths to keep on drains. So, and then you've got to get a good base in. So you basically take it out, put some back. So.
You mean the driveway?
Yeah, that kind of creates a difference. Now we're at towards curb and gutter, that's fine. But you still have to fix the spots where the intersection of those things meet. You gotta get that fixed first. So you have to do little diamond cuts. He's gonna try to put some things together. He's gonna have to all come in and take a look at it to get his opinion. Sometimes it may be better off just to put a new pad in and nothing to do asphalt. So, so he's still gonna kick around some ideas. Like I said, one thing just kind of lets to another.
Well, and some of those holes are deep and there's rebar coming through.
That's what he said. It's gonna have to be cut out, repin, pour. That, that, that's, they're just a labor intensive, not a lot. I'm just labor intensive.
They've been patched for how many years?
Yeah.
I mean, it's been, it's something that's been out there. Fifty years, so it's an asphalt then. Hopefully get by it.
Well, and that's what I asked him. Can you just patch over the top of it? Get rid of the loose and just leave it? He says, you can't, but you'll be right back at it in about four or five years fixing up the bad spots. So. He says, well, maybe attempt to try to do it right for.
Well, and I, and this is something that I don't need to do the whole thing at one time, you know?
Yeah.
Do it over a, a four-year period of time. And actually, a smaller project, you're probably gonna get more bids on. A smaller project than you would, you know, with something that was big and.
Hoping we get more locals participating. Also, if you get something big, a lot of them steer away from that. It's a tight up a long time in one spot.
Well, particularly now with the technology they have. After you guys are seeing all those laser trials operating, I mean, they couldn't make that short work.
Yeah.
You're basically tearing it out and re, rebarred it and then go from there.
Yeah. But I think if we're gonna do it, I think we should consider that west side while we have it closed before we open. If that fits our budgetary window, I guess I, so I, I, my category of need, maybe we should have worked our way through this, not just jump into the hole.
Well, I'll see what Zach comes up with.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see what they.
Well, last week, Wednesday, I did spend four hours riding with Deputy looking at the radio system. And it sounds like in two weeks they'll be done. They're training, literally all the outline, fire departments and stuff. But they should be 100% complete.
Okay. I wondered when they were going to fire.
Two weeks. Go live on the.
They're 100% live. You guys are live.
They'll have three of them done after tonight, so.
Three of the towns?
Three of the towns.
Oh, town.
So. And they did them over the weekend. Sounds like a, a training must.
That's one of my, the ambulance crew is up and running on them already.
You think so, Rich?
The ambulance, they're, they're, they're running on that new frequency also?
That I, I don't think so, yeah.
Okay. Jason is saying that two weeks, you've done it all. This evening training for all the smaller towns.
You got anything for the board?
Yeah.
No, I'm just stopping in here. Have you had done the Cherokee thing already?
I want to watch and call her, see where she's. That's one of my stuff, Ken. That's what we're waiting on right now. Do we have an occupancy sign or are we? No occupancy.
Safe next to it. Sell for the city, just in case.
From the north side. Okay, drive to, what, police department. Okay. Drive on the north side of the block and then come in from the east because it's blocked on the west side. Okay, I just stopped up. Okay, all right. She must be up. Going around in circles?
I talked to somebody that was using GPS to get here and it took them there. Then they couldn't turn in there. Then they ended up. How do I get over there?
You come back from, I can't remember which GPS. I was using one on the car. And my wife had a different one on the phone. And when you come through Kansas City on Interstate 35, it recommends that you get off. Go down past the post office building, get back up on 35 between you want to continue north. No particular reason, just that's what it, it was showing your direction. She says, we shouldn't be getting off here. That time it said point north. I think I flipped that aside. She says, no. So we, she held it out and I could see it like. I said, what's that building? This mark there? That's the postal service. And I just loaded those from one post office to the next post office and then worked its way.
So we are going through Kansas City?
We're coming from Kansas City from the south. We were actually coming in from Little Rock, Arkansas, and headed north.
Ben, is there any comments at this time?
There's not, no.
I asked you while we were waiting.
But we were gonna get off.
Thank you.
Going to level with Kansas and stop just looking for that. I could, they accept number. That's the reason we had him on. But first it wanted us to do that. Who's the first?
Well, I was going to Lawrence and I got lost on my way there. My GPS was on work and then I went through level. It's kind of a neat one. Yeah. And I, I did make my way to Lawrence, but it took me like a half hour.
Didn't have a really old bridge to go across.
Yes, and I don't like bridges either.
The big old.
And it had to do, because there was a bunch of flooding down there at that time. And so much of the roads were closed and like.
There's actually, if you look on the north side of that bridge, there's a little history lesson there. This bank of the river, a swale in. That was from the Mormon Trail. And they drug it. They drug it. Knocked the dirt down so they could get the wagon trains through. Because it was too steep to go up. So they leveled it as that. That's right where Ford to level it. For it to drop right into the Ford. That's pretty cool. Think what are that project?
I was.
Did he get out of the prison then?
No, I was just more worried about getting across that bridge. I thought, oh, come on. I'm not just at all.
What is that bridge on?
Did you just turn just as soon as you got?
Well, I want to, I usually took a back way so I didn't have to go through Kansas City. And the back way I wanted to take.
Oh, I crossed.
So then I'm like, I didn't want that track.
I see they have a public area.
I saw something about it. Just so you get across the bridge.
The High Trestle Bridge?
No, the, the bridge on.
And I have a little braver and I do go over Kansas City, but we go through like where the racetrack is.
Yep.
On the edge and then take. It's the fastest I, I've found. Take 71 down, look through St. Joe, come over.
This is gonna be a big issue to me.
Sure.
Fine.
Okay, uh, the S Center's got a request here for the board. And I thought it'd be nice that to have Cheryl out there. Correct the presentation on it. And this way you guys get, I know some of you have never met Cheryl. She's our director up at the Youth Emergency Services Center, uh, which we are part of. 14 county, 13 county.
13.
County, uh, 28 degree. So let's go around the room. Steve, you understand?
Shetler. I was alternating on once for Gene. I have, I have been up there for years.
Scott Johnson.
Um, county auditor, Courtney O'Beck. Stephanie.
Uh, Rick Robbins.
And you don't know me. She doesn't do very well. So anyway, I'll turn to review show.
Um, and if you all had a chance to take a look at the proposal that we have. I'm trying to get onto your internet and I'm having a difficult time here with it. The week, what we're looking at is, we had spoken to ICAP regarding, um, the American Rescue Fund. And they had stated that as a 28 of 13 counties, that we would be unable to apply for the monies ourselves. Even though we are a sub-government agency, or much like the roads department would be, or the, um, the sheriff's department. Although we don't belong to just one county, but we do belong to 13 counties. And in order to receive the funds, we would have to go through each individual county to request the monies to, receive reimbursement for some of the issues that we encountered during the COVID year. We were unable to, as you know, our facility doesn't allow us to, um, thank you. Our facility doesn't allow us to close the doors and work from home. And the children that we deal with, I call them children, juveniles, are all, have been charged with crimes. Many of them are assaulted. Many of them we have to do hands-on with. It's not the easy ones that come in. We don't take kids in on curfew, alcohol charges, minor offenses any longer. These are the ones that come in on felonies and higher offenses. Many of them are headed to the jails or the prisons when they're finished with us. We discovered at the time of the COVID that we're, even as a smaller facility, we were poorly equipped for some of the unique challenges that COVID brought about. And I think a lot of agencies were, but we found that we needed to adapt to the situation. And we also need to make some changes so it doesn't occur again in the future. One of the things that we had talked about, we had set our control room aside a number of years ago, because a lot of the kids, we put them into restraints, put them in their rooms, leave them in there for a little while, give them a chance to calm down. We've discovered that if the juveniles, when they get out of control and with the increase in the mental health issues that are going around, um, and I'm sure many of you are well aware of those. These kids are taking longer to de-escalate. They're taking longer to calm themselves. It's getting more difficult to get them on medications. More difficult to get them to doctor's appointments if we were able to put them into these control rooms and bring some distance between themselves and the staff members. Put them in there, allow them to punch the wall, sit down, um, cry it out, get through whatever emotional issue they're having. It also gives us a little more time to work with them. When they're in restraints, we have to stay there, literally on top of them. Not on top of them, but next to them with, believe, much more than within six foot distancing, much more than in one foot distancing. We have to be hands-on while they're in restraints, when they're in a detention center. When they're in a control room, they're shut into the room. They've got their own ventilation system. They're able to de-escalate themselves now. In restraints, we can only keep them in for a maximum of one hour and 24 hours. So we put them into restraints, 24 hours later, they are still having emotional issues. We're back to the hands-on again, up close and personal. Kids don't wear masks when they're out of control. Um, it, it just does not happen. When they're in the control room, they can kick, they can bang, they can get through it. But they could be in there up to 24 hours. It's just like a room with the mattress. It's just got its own ventilation. It's just got its own ventilation system and it's soundproofed. We have cameras um in the room. We don't in their personal rooms. Um, in their sleeping rooms, we do not keep cameras in there. They're allowed that privacy at night. So. When they're in a control room, they're isolated from the staff and they're able, there's less harm to everyone. And we're able to keep a little bit of that distancing, which is the reason that we had asked for that. Um, one of the items that had come up that we discovered during COVID was the increase, the. Increase in transportations of mental health clients and juvenile detention clients. The sheriffs. Were. Requesting, a number of the sheriff's departments were requesting a lot more transports to be able to keep their deputies in the counties. They were either short-staffed. Or tied up with what was going on. We took over a lot of the court order transports from hospital to hospital. Many of them are long transports. Yesterday, we had a sixteen-hour transport from up in Spencer all the way over, I believe, to Davenport. It might have been longer than that. So what, and what we were doing at the time was many of the hospitals had signed contracts with us to. Move the clients from the hospitals to the hospitals to open up the beds for the COVID clients. They were opening up wings. It was in because of all of the emergency calls. We became a. A subsidiary, if you will, to a lot of the, not just the hospitals and the ambulances, but it's to the sheriff's departments as well. We signed contracts with a number of the counties to assist with. On the transportation of their juveniles and their court ordered mental health clients. I don't believe Carroll County is currently on contract with us. A number of them are. So we um, we discovered that increase. Now, the downside of that was we also had. A couple of incidents with deer, blizzards, because we don't have the option of saying, no, we'll come and get them in twelve hours. If they needed a bed for a COVID client. We were moving up there. A couple of the hospitals just closed off their mental health payments. We went up, got their clients and moved them all over the state. In the middle of a blizzard. We go where we go. Um, there's, we don't have an option of saying yes or no unless the roads are being shut down. So we are, we were looking at, we ended up having to get two new cars. Just to be able to handle all of the transportation that we've been doing over the last year. Couple of the things that we've discovered also is I see people got iPads. It, we're doing a lot more Zoom meetings. We were looking at some monies to be able to assist the clients with doing courts. Via electronic rather than in person. The courts are a little more comfortable having their clients um. Talk to them remotely rather than in person. And these were some of the basic items that we were looking at subsidizing. What we had come up with was a total for this year. Of a lot of the items that we either need to replace or to upgrade. In order to bring us. Bring ourselves up to a point where we can um. Adapt to this in any further situations that would come up and although the original number of the eighty-six thousand seems large, it's also divided by our thirteen counties. And what we were looking at is what was the six thousand six hundred from each one of the counties to help us to. Um, work through some of these situations. You'll notice one of them is the classrooms all over, all over the country. They have study carols. They have the plastic hanging down. To allow the students to have some protected airspace in their classrooms. We're unable to do that in the detention center. We can't have things hanging from the wall. Um, that's just a recipe for disaster. So what we were looking at was just putting some carols in to keep the clients a little protected from each other. Reduce some of the airflow. The state is looking at putting in a new ventilation system throughout the building. Unfortunately. We're at the bottom of the ventilation and repair list for the state because they want to get their mental health institute. Done first. Thank who so the sex offender prison, which is also on the campus. And then apparently they have found an asbestos problem in one of the other buildings that they have to tear down. So it could be a year and a half before we would be able to get a new ventilation system in. So. Didn't know if you had any questions regarding any of this or?
Scott, for your, you know where this is at? It's up on the Cherokee.
Cherokee, right.
And then they also have another building, she mentioned. We just lose, lose space up there.
Cheryl, did you, and I apologize because I don't. Trying to, I don't have that information in front of me and I. I just don't recall. Did you apply to the mental health? Group in the northwest part for CAREERS Act?
We attempted to. We were told that we didn't apply to that, that we're not allowed to. Um, access those monies. We've tried on a couple of occasions.
Because we, we, we had funds and we did. We, we, we approved some of those, but I, I just don't remember whether I seen. The S Center there at all. I, I don't know.
We had talked to the state about that, um, as far as how the CAREERS Act works and they had said that because we are. Part of the twenty, because we are twenty-eightty of the multiple counties, we do, we cannot qualify for that. So we're, because we're an actual government. Agency, sub-government agency, if you will. I hate to call us that, but. Yeah, we did apply. We did talk to different. Knowledgeable persons and we were told by one hundred percent across the board, no, we couldn't get those monies. We had looked to maybe getting. Reimbursement for some of the vehicles that were used in the mental health transports that had been damaged. Just to receive assistance with them or to get vehicles for that. And they said no, because we did a lot of transporting.
Transportation has got to be just unreal.
Oh, it's.
I mean, they've got people running transit and they would like to even, and I just. Ken and I talked about this morning, but anybody knows retired law, prefer law enforcement or jail. If someone that's retired and want to drive, they would like to put a car down in this area.
Yes.
Because they're starting now, they can call them auto, right? Are you giving the contract?
We just signed a contract with Autobahn Huntsville.
So if you know someone that was interested in that, let me or Cheryl know. And in the past, what we've done is used a lot of used vehicles that came from sheriff's departments. We've had some counties out there in the north. That have been very generous. Uh, with some of their vehicles, but you know, when you operate used vehicles, you know them on hauls. Our expenses are. So we found that we could buy some of these, they should be in health, they're right. Uh, you know, pretty reasonable. Otherwise, to get anything with a cage in, it's a bigger vehicle. We're trying to avoid that as long as we can. So. That's the reason we've done that. It's been more beneficial for us and less maintenance costs.
Cheryl, these long hauls under you mentioned that sixteen-hour long haul, that's. And economically is. Very expensive. We have employees that are out there a long time. We have few, you got, there's just a multitude of things. Have you looked at alternative sources? Would, do these clients fall underneath like the air ambulance? Uh, category where they could use uh. Air transportation and it cuts their time down a lot.
Uh, it's my understanding from the air ambulances that you're running at about a thousand dollars a trip for each one. We do have a small. Profit, you know, not very much, but we do have, we, we do keep our rates high enough that we're able to. We charge at fifty cents a mile to cover the cost of the car. And then we charge at, well, for example, if it's a detention client. Uh, we only charge the counties twenty dollars an hour and that is just to come down, get the clients and get them into detention to offset the costs of the sheriff's departments. If it's a mental health client, depending on the time of day, if we're asking a transporter to go out in the middle of the night. Um, or to get out of bed in the middle of the night and come down or on a holiday, we charge enough. To cover the holiday rates for the employees and also to cover their basic rate um of their employment. Including some of the other costs that we have, such as the retirement and the taxes that we pay. We figure out um exactly what the cost is per hour for a transporter and then we add some on just. For a little bit of a profit off of it. Yeah. The more that we're getting, yes, we're getting a little bit more of a profit, but we don't take it at loss. Um, I think we would stop the program if we did that. The air ambulance, the reason the hospitals came to us initially with the COVID was. Those and those helicopters were tied up day and night and I can speak to it personally. My son got it, was in the hospital. I sat in the parking lot and watched him. I watched helicopters come land, take off, land, take off all day long. Ambulances come and go lined up three deep. Uh, and that's when actually. That's was when it all began, when I watched them in July of last year. As everyone was coming and going and realized that they didn't have. What was needed.
It probably would have been if you did have that service, you probably would have been a lower priority, I'm assuming.
Absolutely. And you know, I don't know that. Depends upon the plan. I don't know if they would want them up in there.
There's a few.
Yeah, I mean.
Would you get down into that physically restrained for an hour? An hour in helicopter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
But most of these people aren't physically restrained.
The, the mental health are just.
Cages, they're in a cage.
And I, and I don't know of too many ambulances that are airing that's there with. With the personnel or the right facility for some of these trains.
Now, on, on the mental health transports, the reason that they had come to us initially, all of our vehicles. When we began, we started with vehicles with cages, uh, because we were getting the used vehicles from the sheriff's departments. We have since moved and one of the requests was to move to the Plexiglas and part of that is because. The exchange of bodily fluids from passenger to driver as well as the airflow. We're able to ventilate the cars a little better while the drivers are there so they don't have to wear masks for sixteen hours. Um, we're able to open the back windows and, and get them. Transport out. So we have started moving our vehicles to more Plexiglas. The mental health patients cannot be restrained, but transporting in our car with the Plexiglas in between. Um, is safer for them. We also don't have the door handles on the back because we do also transport detention clients. They just are not able to jump out, injure themselves. Like we've seen a couple of times. In the last few years when, for example, a DHS worker will transport in a private vehicle. They become very hesitant about using private vehicles for things or cars without cages or Plexiglas. We would like to upgrade to Plexiglas. I just, I, I think it's safer for both the drivers and for the. Um, passenger if we are able to at least Plexiglas a majority of it.
I'm just, I'm quite surprised that the state has. That you can't. I. I just, I'm not surprised yet.
So how, how confident that you feel that the recovery downlist will cover these expenses?
If all of the, if all of the counties. Pay their share, it, it will cover these expenses one hundred percent. It will take care of all of it. And there's nothing else that we're anticipating. That we would need from that at this point in time. Some of the counties have stated they're going to be resubmitting next year for some money. And if we had some extra costs or anything that is propped up in that time. As you can see from our, our estimate for our control room was twenty-four thousand, but it was in two thousand and seventeen we got the estimate. We can't get them to come back in right now because of the COVID. They're so backed up. Once they get released. That could be a little higher, but some of the counties have said, yes, they would. Um, help to come in and offset any additional two, three thousand dollars next year. Because they have the time to be able to split them. One hundred percent of the dollars we get would go for the, these items and would cover it one hundred percent.
How many eyes have you presented to you so far?
Uh, you are the second county. We've already received money from two of the counties, so. And I've gotten verbal commitments from three others that they've already agreed to it. Some of them are just waiting for the new fiscal year before they. Set the monies over, so.
Well, it is too bad that you can't get approval, but I, I don't have issue. I don't have any problems.
The thing is, what's kind of crazy is they got money for PPP. But didn't go for this.
Yeah.
They did, they did. They first managed for Brad T P E, but they will not let you jump in that other pool.
Who cares? The PPP and it was only for the transporters. It was not for our detention staff because detention is. Takes care of the government aspect of it, but because our payroll for our transporters was for mental health, then. We were able to apply for another that. So they, we had to take, yeah, we did. Our bookkeeping was interesting because every mental health transport, we had to keep track of what the payroll was for that um in order to get reimbursed.
Any questions for Cheryl? You did say that it may be eventually, there may be another purchase you might be looking at.
We've got the option of two cars, one of the Quinnip County that they're getting rid of, that we would like, um, that we're looking at. Ken, I believe is, and Ken is a retired board member who now drives for us. We just hired two new transporters that are retired deputies up in the north side. We talked to Sheriff Steincooler. He had a couple of reserve officers that we're looking at getting somebody to the south because it's difficult for us to get down here. I shouldn't say difficult. It's longer for us to get down here to get somebody to respond to the mental health transports if we don't have a driver and a car place down here. So we've been looking around at some of these departments and talking to, we had talked to the. A group of sheriffs up in. Lake County here a while back about the need for maybe jailers or. Reserve officers that would be interested in a second job too. And that's where we got the response afterwards. We've got two new ones.
Well, it's good, good to, you know, and kudos to Gene too, as far as supporting this. You know, because I can remember having some real issues about getting these people transported.
Do you do it at all?
You can, you can judge that then, you know.
Do you do it here?
Either the Apple.
No, we do a lot, like two a month. More than that.
But you wouldn't have to do as many.
No, and we rely on them a lot right now for the mental health part of our, we just, it depends on where the person's going. If we get a mental health order down where we're taking somebody to Fort Dodge. Uh, we're not certainly going to have you guys drive down here and then head east to Fort Dodge. We take them there ourselves and then bring them back for their hearing. If that's how it is, but if we have somebody that's going to go from here. Davenport or Burlington, Iowa City, one of the longer runs. We rely heavily on them, especially if they need to come back here for their court date and they're going to go right back to. Where they were, which is a ridiculous trip.
Well, since you've engaged somebody out of the system, patrol.
Quite on the spot.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, we had some issues here in the past of the ambulance service doing this as well and.
And so I mean.
Coming at, boy.
We're lucky here to have St. Anthony's with the fourth floor. That's where eighty-five percent of our committals end up. Unless they're shipped out afterwards and then they usually.
They cost, yeah. We have a contract with them as well when we do a lot of their transports.
Any questions for Cheryl?
You guys, it's a good service.
I don't think there'd be anything wrong with, on admitting to.
Six thousand six hundred nineteen dollars.
Yeah, and we, you know, obviously we have money budgeted for. That. Already, but we just need to do a minute. This, we usually use what we budgeted and then some. So it seems like we're always admitting that line.
But wouldn't we want to take this out of our ARP plans?
We don't have any yet.
Are you going to take the rest of this money? Cause you're about ready to give.
Well, I just got an email saying that my application was denied for some reason, so I'm finding that work up.
And we're already receiving from the other counties, so any that we receive would go on the tail and for things like the control room, which we aren't going to start for about six months.
So basically we could, we could fund that and then when we did get our recovery now, we could just take sixty-six nineteen and put it in the general fund. We could do either way.
Just replace it.
Yeah. Their pay is fixed after.
Alright, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Six thousand six hundred nineteen dollars.
Any further discussion? If not, all of the favor, second five, I say an eye. Contrary, motion period.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to see our new folder?
Yes, I do.
I'll go with you just a second. We're going, anybody else have anything else? If not, we're going to promote it to adjourn.
Second.
All of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.